Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call our meeting to order. This is April 27th, 2021. This is an electronically held regular meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council, and it's virtual. Madam Clerk, will you please take roll call?
Yes, council members, please state the city and state in which you're currently residing. Dave Abdallah.
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Is you here, Abdallah?
Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Mo Badun?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Robert Coniston?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Denise Malinowski Maxwell?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Ray Muscat?
Here, Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
And Tom Wenzel?
Here, in the great city of Dearborn Heights, Wayne County, Michigan.
Madam Chair, you have a call.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to have Councilman Wenzel lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everyone, please be seated. Next, we have Dearborn Heights Community and Cultural Relations Commission presentation. I think we need to unmute some people.
We need to unmute Latanya Gaylord, or I don't know if I said that right, Gator.
Latanya Gator, hold on, oh, hold on.
She is our...
Can you guys hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good, thank you, and I appreciate that. This is Latanya Gator, and participating from my home in Dearborn Heights, Michigan, Wayne County. And again, thank you to the entire council team for adding this to the agenda. We really appreciate it. Just wanted to take a few minutes of your time to present the awards for the women, sorry, Women in Leadership and Community Service Awards in honor of Women's History Month, which was this past March. And so, the commission thought of this idea to honor five women in our city who've shown dedication and passion for community service. And so, we wanted to do that and highlight these women, again, in this city council meeting, so we appreciate that. We put out a poll or a Google survey on our Facebook page in March that allowed any community member of the Dearborn Heights community to nominate a woman who they felt were deserving of this recognition. And so, I want to say to those women that we sincerely appreciate your dedication and service to the city, and that we hope that you continue that work. So, with further ado, I don't know if you guys can see this, but these are the awards. So first, we have Marilyn Summers. She is a D7 Dance Club volunteer and coordinator.
Hey, Marilyn!
Commission, so both Mayor Bazi and I sign that. Lori Fujina. She is a D7 mom and avid volunteer for our D7 students and families, so we appreciate you, Lori, as well.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you.
We have Nadia Berry.
All right!
Thank you, I'm honored, thank you, thank you so much.
We have Zenob Zin. She is a mother of six and educator, so we appreciate your service.
Let me unmute her.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you.
Last, we have Najah Janu.
All right!
So congratulations to you. I will make sure that we have the certificates delivered to you before the week is out. I have a few other things that I feel is important for the community to know. So, we're already trying our best and brainstorming on ways to make this better for years to come. And so, we want all the community feedback to get the best ideas we can have. Again, our meetings are every first Thursday of the month, beginning at seven o'clock. They're currently via Zoom. We want the audience participation, we want the feedback, so we can make this bigger and better for years to come. Just wanted to give a few thanks to the commissioners for putting this together. So, this idea was from Gary Barkoff. He's a commissioner and longtime Dearborn Heights resident, so we appreciate you, Gary. We appreciate you, Councilman Mo Badun, Vice Chair Mo Badun, for helping us get this out on all of the social media and community platforms. Thank you, Sadie Zimblewicks, for coordinating the Google poll and for highlighting these women featured on our Facebook page, so we love that, thank you. Want to say thank you to Secretary Leslie Winless, because she helped us put these certificates together and get them framed. And last but not least, thank you, Mayor Bazi, for the support. Again, we welcome all to our next meeting. The next one will be May the 6th, and we hope that you can attend, thank you, everybody.
All right, all right, I just want to say also, congratulations to Latanya, who has recently been appointed by our Commissioner David Kenezak as the Women, something, I seen that on Facebook, I'm probably pushing it, forgive me.
The Women's Commission, the Wayne County Women's Commission.
Congratulations to you as well.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, Councilman.
Congratulations to all the ones that won, you guys are amazing.
Hey, Mo, don't forget, you want the meeting to go on fast.
Hey, it's going, I see Nadia on here, I see Najah.
You see who's doing all the talking.
Next, we have Agenda Approval.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that the Order of Business for April 27th, 2021, electronically held meeting of the Dearborn Heights City Council be approved.
Support. Support by Councilman Muscat, is there any discussion? Okay, we have...
The mayor has his hand up.
I know, don't do that, please. Thank you, I had Mariana first, so, yeah.
Got to be unmuted.
I'm asking her to unmute, there's a big delay in our system here. Once I hit it and gets to her, it's a good five to 10 seconds, just so everybody knows. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to amend the Closed Session Item 3.1 to include Chief Myers from the Police Department, as well as Corporate Counsel Gary Miyaki.
We already have that.
Okay, thank you. I didn't see it in the agenda on the website, so I just wanted to...
Oh, no, no, we didn't revise it, we had discussed it at the beginning, before we let you in, that who we were gonna let in, and they were already on it, because we got your...
Perfect, thank you.
Thanks.
Yes.
And Mayor, did you still have something?
Thank you, Council Chair. I want to see if we can request to remove Item 7B, which is the request for bids for sidewalks. I'm waiting on a couple items for that one, so I'd like to request from the council to remove Item 7B if possible.
Thank you, Councilman Coniston, can you amend that motion and remove 7B, please?
Yes, I'd move that we approve the Order of Business for April 27th, 2021, virtually held Dearborn Heights City Council meeting with the deletion of Item 7B, which is referred back to the administration.
Support.
Support again by Councilman Muscat, at this time, is there any further discussion on the Agenda Approval?
Thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have, I would like to move to go into a closed session.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I moved that the City Council move into closed session, as outlined in 3.1.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? At this time, we need to let the public know, we are going into a closed study session. As soon as we're done, we will return back to the regular meeting.
Madam Chair, for closed session, we do need a roll call vote of all members.
Okay, let's do that then. Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Councilman Badun?
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell is a yes. This time, we will break out into a closed study session.
Chair, if I could get the hosting capabilities, I'll get you over in that room now.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I gave you co-hosts, hold on. There you go.
All right, thank you. Okay, that should be there for them.
Join, bring up. There we go.
Thank you, everyone. City Council is now joining the meeting again. We are done with our closed study session. Who would like to make the motion?
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the City Council take the recommendation of Corporation Counsel in the matter of 3.1A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, any discussion?
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I think it's just the Attorney for the City. Corporation Counsel is Gary Miyaki's, so you might just amend it to say the Attorney for the City of Dearborn Heights.
I move that the City Council approve the...
Recommendation.
Recommendation.
Recommendation of the City Attorney, Jeffrey R. Clark, in closed session on 3.1A.
Support.
Support again by Councilman Badun, any further discussion before we vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next item on the agenda is Approval of Minutes. This is Minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of April 13th, 2021.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Badun?
Move that the City of Dearborn Heights approve the Minutes for the electronically held regular meetings on April 13th, 2021, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Abstain.
Oh, Councilman Abdallah, okay, he was not unmuted.
The vote no on the settlement.
No, no, I abstained from the approval of the minutes, because I wasn't here at that meeting.
I was muted.
Okay, okay, wait, let's back up. Councilman Abdallah was muted during the vote. I thought everybody was unmuted, and I apologize. I thought we caught everybody. So, Councilman Muscat, would you please make that motion again that we did after we came out of the closed study session?
I move that the City Council take the recommendation of the City Attorney Jeffrey R. Clark in the lawsuit of 3.1A.
Support.
Support again by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, we need to take a roll call. Councilman Muscat?
Yes.
Councilman Coniston?
Yes.
Councilman Abdallah?
No.
Councilman Abdallah?
Yes.
Councilman Badun?
Yes.
Councilman Wenzel?
Yes.
Malinowski Maxwell, yes, it passes. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Minutes. Again, this is the Minutes from the electronically held regular meeting of April 13th, 2021.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Badun?
I move that the City of Dearborn Heights approve the Minutes for the electronically held regular meeting on April 13th, 2021, as outlined in 4A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Pardon?
I abstain from voting. I wasn't at that meeting. I can't approve the Minutes.
Well, they just say, no, you can't abstain.
They're copy of them.
I know, but I can't say they're good or bad, because I wasn't at the meeting. I just abstain from voting. But I can't vote yes or no on that.
How would you like to handle this?
I don't know if that, I can check with Corporation Counsel, but I don't know if that's a reason to abstain.
Corporation Counsel, hold on. Somebody else got, he raises his hand. I tried to unmute him, but he raised his hand and flipped to another section.
He's up front.
Oh, I'm unmuted.
Okay.
Yes, everyone is supposed to vote, unless they have a direct financial interest in the particular matter or are unanimously excused from voting. So, Councilman Wenzel would not have an appropriate basis, just on its face, to end up being excused from voting. However, if the council's body unanimously agreed to excuse him, you have that ability to do so, thank you.
Thank you. I'll change my vote to yes.
Thank you. It is approved, the Minutes are approved. Next, we have Public Hearing and Comment on Agenda Items. That's on this agenda only, and you have a limit of two minutes. Anyone have any comment? Please raise your hand in the Zoom session. Seeing none, I will move on. Next, we have Fund Transfers and Current Claims.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve Current Claims 6-1 through 6-27 as submitted.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Consideration of Bids. Under this, we have the Park and Recreation Director Coniston Bid Award for 10 Heavy Duty Park Picnic Tables.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdallah?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council award the bid for 10 Heavy Duty Park Picnic Tables to Jamestown Advanced Products in the amount of $3,578, as they are the lowest qualified bidder. Funds have been allocated in the 2020-2021 Recreation Department Budget. In addition, authorize Controller's Office to return all bid bonds to the companies that participated in the bidding process, as outlined in Item 7A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion or questions? Okay, is it a question directly related to this purchase?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. And it's, you know, to Mrs. Coniston, thank you so much to Director Coniston, I'm sorry, for everything that you're doing. I know the last time that when we discussed this, I know we're approving of this. I know you said you're going to send them out to some of the different parks. I did ask if we can request one to have one at the Camfield Center. My hootles to you, if you can do that, if not, hey, I understand, I would appreciate if we could. Just because I kind of feel like I want to see a park more, more of a park there, where people at the tennis courts, people that are at the softball, having the picnic chair would, I think would be very beneficial, if possible.
Any further discussion before we vote on this?
Did you want to see if she can answer that?
Okay, hold on a minute. I was waiting for her to raise her hand if she was gonna say something, but I figured she was writing it down.
Actually, I was just waiting to see if you wanted me to answer. Anyway, in regards to the picnic tables, we've had picnic tables here at the Camfield Center in the past, and it's actually created a problem with the high school students. I can try it again, and, you know, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, are you looking at picnic tables more towards the ball fields? Is that the area that you're interested in?
Even near like the tennis courts, and you know, I say that, and because I was one of those students in high school, and, you know, I'd rather see our children more in our parks than seeing them on the streets. So, I mean, and I know it probably gets pretty hectic late at night.
There's been other issues with the Camfield Center or Central Park and having picnic tables. I don't really like, want to go into detail, but I can let you know what those are later, but we can certainly try it again and see how it goes, you know?
Okay.
Further discussion before we vote on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, for reports from city officials, hold on, I'm sorry. I forgot to lock her in another room.
Boy.
Okay, next under reports.
Feel that bad now?
Next, from reports from city officials, Assessor Comer, response to vacation query.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
That the Dearborn City Council authorized a public hearing for the vacation of the alley between Mayburn and Telegraph behind Warren for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, as outlined in 9A.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have Park and Recreation Director Coniston. This is the Spring, Summer, Fall Youth Sports Parents Association Allotments.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that the Dearborn Heights City Council authorized payment to the Youth Sports Parents Association for their Spring, Summer, and Fall allotments. Funds have been allocated in the 2020-2021 Parks and Recreation Budget, as outlined in 9B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, also, under Park and Recreation Director Coniston, we have Budget Transfer Request.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Abdallah?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council authorize Controller to transfer funds from the Spirit Festival Account 101-691-891000 in an amount of $45,500 into the Recreation Department Capital Outlay Account to use for building repairs and improvements at the Eaton Senior Recreation Center and Camfield Community Center, as outlined in Item 9C.
Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion? All those in, you have a question?
Yes.
Go ahead, please.
Director. Director, are you there? Coniston, Director Coniston?
I'm here now.
Okay, great. So, I've got a question for you, the $45,000, that's, because usually, I know we get some funds from sales at the festival. Obviously, we don't have those funds coming anymore. Where's this particular $45,000 coming from?
Well, the $45,000 is the money that's allocated for the expenses of the Spirit Festival. Most of our revenue for the Spirit Festival comes from the ride company. So, this actually is funds that is budgeted every year for the expenses that we need, such as our entertainment, our staff, you know, regular everyday expenses we have for the four-day festival. And that's what I'm using, since we don't need it.
Security included, Nick?
We've had security in the past, and I believe we did the last year, but I'm not sure if we had it in 2019. So, I know Ken has always had it in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions in regards to this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, under New Business, we have a business license renewal for Antonio's that is located at 26356 Ford Road.
Madam Chair?
Councilman Coniston?
I move that we renew the business license for Antonio's Cucina Italiano on Ford Road in Dearborn Heights, as outlined in 13A. Support.
Support by Councilman Badun, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we have a permanent traffic control device, T-282, install several no parking fire lane signs on both the north and south side of Beechwood.
Council Chair?
Councilman Muscat?
I move that Dearborn Heights City Council approve the permanent traffic control device, T-282, and install several no parking fire lane signs on the north and south side of Beechwood, as outlined in 13B.
Support.
Support by Councilman Coniston, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Next, we will open up comments from council members. I ask you, limited to three minutes. Anybody has a question, I mean, has an announcement? Okay, Councilman Wenzel?
Yeah, thank you. First, I want to thank all the ladies in the Clerk's office, Lynn, Dana, Kathy, and George, for helping this old geezer here with some IT problems I've been having, and they spent about an hour with me today, and they took me to school on a lot of the issues that I really needed to address, and I want to thank them for their time, they did a great job, and I kind of understand now. And I'd like to congratulate our five ladies who got the awards from the Dearborn Heights Community and Culture Relations Commission. Congratulations to those girls, and to all the girls that were nominated, all the women that were nominated for that, for this award. And I'd like to also make an announcement that we're having our 28th Annual Dearborn Heights Watershed Commission, E Course Creek Cleanup and Rain Garden Maintenance Park Beautification Day on May 22nd. We're looking for volunteers and sponsors. I believe the flyers on the city website, if not, I'm sure it'll be up tomorrow. But if anyone wants to volunteer for that or sponsor, they can get ahold of me, or they can call the mayor's office and volunteer for that. And I'd like to just mention a great resident of Dearborn Heights, someone that's so modest, they told me never to mention their name, but I want to just say thank you for everything you do for the City of Dearborn Heights, Mike Mackey, he's a great, great resident, and we're proud to have him, we're lucky to have him in our city. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Muscat.
Just a few things here. Number one, I don't know if I mentioned this at the last City Council meeting, but announcements for, you know, officials that come in and want to have some announcements, like it's on 14B right now, be moved to the beginning of the session so they can get in and out and go to other council meetings and other parts of business. So, I'd like to see that, if it's possible, we move that in the future. That's something that we can talk about at a different time, but it's just, again, to mention it. Number two, and I guess this question is for the chief, if the chief of police, if he doesn't mind, getting complaints that they don't think that cars are being ticketed on trash pickup days that are parked in the street. And are we doing that?
So...
Would you like to answer that?
Sure, I can answer that. So, there's two types that you're talking about, the cars that are out there that nobody makes complaints over, and we've made a decision between the administration and us that if we get calls, that we will enforce it or gain compliance. So, our goal is to enforce the violation or gain compliance. We can do either of those, we've succeeded, because we have different instances for everything. So, we're trying to make everybody happy, so if we can gain compliance, we gain compliance. If we can't, then we issue a violation.
In saying that, Chief Myers, when a police officer is traveling in his daily route or whatever, and he sees cars parked on trash pickup days, is he gonna stop and give tickets or not?
No.
And is there a reason why not? Since there is an ordinance against it right now.
There is, but instead of trying to put... There is, but instead of trying to put the economic burden on those that can't afford it, that we issue violations, and their whether it goes through the court system, if we have somebody that can complain, we will issue the violation. So what we're doing is we're trying to settle it from both sides of the field of if we get a complaint, we'll try to gain compliance or do the violation, but we're not actively seeking that out because we'd be spending all day doing it, and then the complaints would come in on the other side that were ticketing cars that aren't interfering with the trucks because it's four thirty in the afternoon, and their garbage was already picked up. So we have to play the balance game. I think it's a I think it's a fair balance, and we'll keep doing it unless otherwise directed to do something different.
And one one more item, Council Chair, if you don't mind, please.
Go ahead.
Uh, just to let residents know, please take, put your trash receptacles either on the approach or on the grass. Do not put them in the street. They can't go in the street. Can't get street sweepers down the street to clean streets if they're put in the street. So um a- and if you have a lawn service, make sure that they don't blow the grass out into the street and leave it there. We're supposed to get it off the street. So uh again, please uh, you know, do that so we can keep our streets clean uh as good as as well as we can and and help our DPW uh equal. Thank you.
Next, I have Councilman Abdelhaq. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have two items. I would like to ask the administration to work with the police to provide them with body cameras. That is very important for their safety and for the safety of the residents. We need to know what happened when an incident happened, so we are not open for lawsuits in the future. So I ask our mayor, please, to see if they can budget it in this budget and have those cameras as soon as possible. Second, I would like to make a motion uh about the nine one one. We have been kicking this around for a long time. I think we spoke and the residents spoke, and I'd like tonight to make a motion to keep the nine one one dispatch in the city of Dearborn Heights and ask the administration to start basically working on manning this dispatch center and to provide the latest technology possible for the dispatchers.
Our second. Thank you, Councilman Abdelhaq, but we can no longer do it at the end. We've never done it in the past. That needs to be done at the beginning. I agree with you, but we cannot do it during public comments anymore. That was to be done with the agenda at the beginning. Um, we can do it next meeting if you like. I'd be more than happy to put something on if you want.
That is fine. I will submit my resolution to basically put it on the agenda. Thank you.
But thank you. I appreciate it.
No problem.
Anything else, Mr. Abdelhaq, before we go on?
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. Next, I have Councilman Baydun.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Thank you to everybody. I, you know, I wasn't going to comment on this, but I want to say to the chief of police, I actually love that idea. I know that sometimes, you know, it's it's frustrating where, you know, it took to to come Councilman Muscat, where there's some residents that are parking in the street, but I also believe in that theory that, you know, ticketing somebody in this time today, I think it's real hard, and I think that also just puts a burden on our some of our residents. So actually, I love that idea, or we can come up with a solution to parking on one side of the road on on garbage day, and everybody else putting their garbage bins on the opposite side of the road. That's just another solution. I see you nodding your head there. No big deal. Uh, the next thing that I have, if we can, you know, this is to the chief of police.
I just.
Um, if we can run a study session at the corner or at the light at Ford Road and Gully, I've reached out to the state and the county. Thanks to the county, Asad Turfi, the uh chief of staff for Wayne County, they went ahead and flipped the switch so that the light is no longer blinking in the holy month of Ramadan, and I am, I was also speaking with another officer who said uh during the great night of power, it also goes blinking. A lot of people are wearing dark colors. See if we can get that switched over so it's not blinking at midnight to kind of ease it up for some of the officers. But I was also wondering if we can get a study session, and and I don't know if it's possible or not, if this is a state issue or if it's uh with the police department, but to see if we can get a turn left, a a left turn uh right there on on Ford Road and Gully, or I'm sorry, on on, yes, on Ford Road and Gully to turn left, I'm going west or going east? Trying to go north or trying to go south? When you're facing west and you're trying to go the opposite to make a left turn, what's happening is cars are getting stuck there. It's red, and then they're just turning. Uh, I don't know if you guys seen, there was a huge accident recently. One car was turning left. A guy blew the red light. I think both people were at fault. Uh, but you know, I spoke with the, some of the business owners there on Ford Road and Gully, and they said, we have been begging for a turn left signal. I don't know if it's possible, but I said I would bring it up at the next city council meeting. So I don't know if the chief can answer that or if that's.
Yeah, I can. I, you, you sound very, very much like Councilman Muscat. Um.
Right. I see you talking about it. I had no idea.
I have done that, yes.
You you might have left out one or two words or added a couple, but i- it's the same thing. We work with the county and the state. We can provide them the numbers, but the actual application of putting in that traffic signal is completely on them. Um, I travel through that. My kids travel through it. I hundred percent agree. I don't know if a turn signal would have helped Saturday night with as late as that car was going through the red light.
That's true.
In the video, but I do agree. Um, we can only continue to supply the numbers. Uh, we give them the traffic crash data from there. They know the amount of cars that travel that road because they put, the county puts out the the vehicle counters. So all we do is provide them the violations and the accidents that happen at that corner.
Thank you, chief, and I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna leave it. One more thing, if I can set something up with maybe the with the uh Wayne County uh.
It's a state road.
And and maybe somebody with the state, I can reach out to a good friend of mine who helped issue the light to be able to switch it. She said she's willing to sit down and have a conversation with us to see what she can do to help assist us.
Well, if you can find the person that can do it, we'll turn the data over.
Hey, consider it done. I'm going to get it done for us, I promise. And that's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next, I have Councilman Conston. Go ahead, please. You have three minutes.
Madam Chair, and I too want to congratulate uh all the women who were uh received awards from our city diversity commission, Nadia Berry and uh uh Nadia Jaydun and everyone else. I butchered that name.
Najah Zanun.
Uh, Najah.
Najah.
Bob Hades's niece, my good friend Bob Hades's niece. Uh, and um I I got vaccinated. Uh, I hope everyone's getting vaccinated. Um. Thank you for all the people who are doing the work at the Dearborn Area uh Vaccination Vaccination Center over at the um Mike Idol Theater. Uh, they're doing a great job. And um look forward to seeing everybody at the Rain Garden uh cleanup on May twenty second uh at the Richard A. Young Center uh starting at nine o'clock, put on by the Dearborn Heights Watershed Stewards Commission. Thank you.
Next, I have Councilman Abdullah. Three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, just quickly for the administration and the mayor, I'd like to have them look into the twenty five million dollars that we have potentially come into our city through the federal government. Now, I I know there's nothing uh specific as far as what can or can't be used for, but I'd like to have us look into uh number one, if maybe possible, instead of putting out the bond, to have the residents pay that in taxes, maybe using some of that money towards that, so we don't have to put out as big of a bond. Uh, I'm talking about for the water meters, et cetera, and the CSO. And the second thing is, uh, it looks second, second thing is, it looks like, you know, we are potentially going in a direction where we may not go into a combined dispatch, and just so that we are prepared, I'd like to see some of that money or maybe all of that money used for improving our dispatch. If we end up deciding and voting to go in that direction, I'd like to have that uh ready to go because twenty five million is a lot of money, and I'd like to have it used, you know, for the right things. And in this case, I think both of those would be the right things to use in points. I'd like to have you start looking into that if you don't mind. And I, do you have any idea as far as when we anticipate we'd get that from the federal government?
Okay.
Mayor?
Can I answer?
Go ahead, please.
Okay, thank you, Council Chair Protam Abdullah. Uh, yeah, we're actually looking at the all the possibilities where we can use the money as uh, you know, I mentioned at the last meeting, uh, we're in, I'm I'm in continuous uh communications with both Congresswoman Dengel and Congresswoman uh uh Tleb. Uh, we're going over all the where we can use the money, where we can't use the money, obviously, for the for the bond. I mean, some of the things we can't use that money on uh some the items that we we passed on the bond, you know, several months ago. But we can use it on uh in infrastructure. Obviously, we can use it on uh COVID-related items. Uh, we can use it on a a lot of things. So we're looking at the, we're looking at all the requirements right now. We're still waiting. Things are still coming into us. Um, they haven't really come up with uh, you know, solid uh requirements. This is what you need to use it on, and the the state is uh also, we're waiting for the state uh Treasury to uh give us more guidelines. Um, so we we put a plan together, myself and the and the chief of staff. We came up with some items that what we can use it on. And once we finalize it, we can share with the council.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have mayor. You have three minutes. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Council Chair. I'll I'll be fast then. Uh, so the rating, the the bond rating for the the standard core, uh the bond goes up for sale tomorrow. Um, also, uh, I uh, I want to just reiterate, you know, some of the stuff we talked about at the last meeting. Uh, we need to uh see if the council can give us feedback. We're we're in the process of revising the five, the the master plan for the city. It hasn't been done for at least twelve, but so so years. Um, so again, we need the guidance from the from the council. We already came up with a lot of ideas. Uh, but again, you know, we we want this uh to be uh with the council. We want them to engage, you know, some of the stuff, you know, again, we came up with uh, you know, the governance, uh e- economic development, increased resident engagement, implement efficiency, you know, uh, public service, uh, you know, increase resident, uh, resident, uh residency, uh eliminate blight, you know, there's uh improved technology. Uh, there's, there's a lot of things that we're working on, but again, we need the the council to give us feedback, so we can make sure that, you know, your feedbacks are, you know, uh, are ants, you know, whatever that concerns or uh any suggestions that you guys have, we're going to implement that in the fi- in the master plan. So please submit that to us as soon as possible. We are currently working on it. Uh, we have uh our engineer, uh, and also uh Mr. Salmy and Mr. Deep working on that uh the plan, so please submit it when you can. I just want to announce also on Thursday's Arbor Day, we're going to plant a tree, and we're going to dedicate it to Mayor Palacko and uh memory of Mayor Palacko. So it'd be planted between the library and the city hall. You guys are welcome to come. Uh, it will be planted around eleven P eleven AM. Uh, I want to commend also our fire department for uh receiving an award for Salvation Army. They don't just help uh fight fighters, they help combat uh hunger and homelessness. And thanks for the fire department for their continuous engagement. I also want to commend some police officers. Uh, they actually made an arrest. Uh, there was an armed robbery uh in White Lake, and uh there was a, it was an armed robbery. There was uh, uh, two victims were involved, and it was a obviously handgun at gunpoint, and Sergeant Mitchell, uh Officers Masloom, uh Officer Burkowski, Officer Yunus. Uh, they made the arrest both suspects, and they recovered the handgun. I commend them, and you know, thank you for for their service.
Thank you. Next, we have Chief of Staff Marianna Hernandez.
Thank you, Council Chair. I just have a couple of items to go through. One of them is to thank everyone that has registered for the Dan Paletko Memorial Golf Outing. Uh, we no longer have registrations available because it is sold out, but we do have full sponsorships, dinner tickets, and prize donations that are still available, and all of these funds are again in order to help our first responders. So if anyone is interested in that, uh, please feel free to reach out to Keri Hatton at C H Hatton at C I dot Dearborn dash heights dot M I dot U S uh for any additional details. I also want to remind everybody that vaccinations are currently open for appointments and walk-ins at our Dearborn Vaccination Center, and this are open every day from nine AM to noon, and then they reopen from one thirty to six PM. The cases are still pretty high in the city of Dearborn Heights, so I do want to encourage everybody to continue to get their vaccinations done. Uh, I also want to invite any um commissions that are out there, and there is some interest already, uh, to apply for the MML League Foundation uh micrograms that are open right now. Uh, this are open for neighborhood groups, uh book clubs, and other projects that encourage encourage civic participation. Uh, the application process opens on April thirtieth. So anyone that is interested in participating, please feel free to uh visit mmlfoundation.org-grants. And if you have any further questions, uh myself and our new um grant writer are more than happy to answer any questions that you may have. Um, one more thing is that we are also on the last week for our Dearborn Heights Today magazine ads to go out. If so, if anybody's interested, please reach out to Bob Ankrab at B Ankrab that um C I that Dearborn dash heights that M I dot U S. So again, lots of announcements. Uh, any further questions, uh, please feel free to reach out to us. The information is also available on our website. And have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, I have Madam Clerk.
Hi, thank you, Council Chair. Um, just a quick announcement that those residing registered voters, well, actually, those residing in District Seven, precincts twenty three through twenty seven, there's an election on Tuesday, May fourth. Uh, polls will be open from seven, seven AM to eight PM. City Clerk's Office will also be open for election business only where required by law um this coming Saturday, May first, from eight AM to four PM. Um, you can, any um anyone that's not registered is welcome to come in and register, and you can pick up a ballot here, or you can go to the polls on Tuesday. Thank you.
Frasier Hicks Clayton.
Okay, good evening, everyone. So um, thank you, Mayor Fozzie, for mentioning the rating. And I think that's something that's really exciting for our city. It's like a report card on our fiscal health, and just like an individual has a credit score, our rating has him is good. I mean, we're an A plus. This is public information from Standard and Poor's. What I wanted to do is I wanted to say thank you to the team that really worked diligently the last three months to make this happen, including Chief of Staff Hernandez, Controller Jawad, PFM, which is our financial group, Ma- Martin with Plant Moran has been wonderful, DPW Director John Selmy, and then I was part of that team. Um, I'm just gonna, real quick, because we don't have much time, but I wanted to share some highlights what we were rated on, what over the rec, what was shared with us. The rating reflects the opinion that the city has strong budgetary performance, strong budgetary flexibility, strong institutional framework. And I think that speaks volumes considering, and they did note that, that since we're still in the middle of pandemic, there's still economic impact. Um, that's really, we're doing very well, and and that's thank you to everybody that's part of this team that made that happen. That bond sale does go tomorrow at eleven thirty, so um, I just wanted to again say thank you to everybody, but I think it's something we should be excited about is that rating. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Chief Myers.
Yes, thank you. I just wanted to touch base. Um, if you, uh, if you don't follow Facebook, we put out a Facebook post uh just recently, and it's it's from the police department. It's really all stems from traffic complaints. Um, we hear every traffic complaint that people are bringing to us. We agree that the exhausts are loud, that the drag racing is dangerous, and that people's driving habits have spiraled out of control. Um, not just in our city, but in every city. Um, so if you haven't seen the Facebook post since January first, um, an unpleasurable task for our officers, but it's one that they have to do. We've issued almost four thousand violations since January first. Um, almost a thousand on Ford Road alone. Uh, just this past weekend, we had uh to help with our increased nightlife during the Ramadan season, we've increased uh overtime details on the Ford Road, Warren Telegraph Beach Daily area to protect people. We have a reserves volunteering to go out there, and just this weekend alone, we were, we were forced to write eighty five violations in that area. We seized one car for drag racing, seized two more, I believe, for drunk driving, and about eight other vehicles for people driving on um uh invalid licenses. So our officers are out there. We're going to continue to be out there. We're working through the problems or the puzzle of having details out there all summer long, because if we wrote four thousand during the winter months, I can only imagine what summer is going to bring with the driving habits. Because if we wrote four thousand during the winter months, I can only imagine what summer is going to bring with the driving habits. I hope everybody talks to their, their children, to their spouses, to their friends. This is our community, we need to make it safe. We need everybody to check each other and say, this isn't how we want to drive in our city. We want it to be safe, we want our children to be safe. But we'll continue to do our job, we'll continue to enforce these, but we hear your complaints, we're doing what we can. But we are, we are trying, and we'll continue to move towards that to make these streets safer.
So, Council Chair, if you don't mind, I'd like to ask the chief a question on, on that subject. If, you know, I have the same problem on my screen, if we give you a license plate number, do you check it out at all, or? Or do we file a complaint?
So, for a civil infraction, and Mr. Miyake's here, but for a civil infraction, we have to witness it. A plate is very difficult, because I have to put the person driving that vehicle inside that car with my eyes.
Correct.
Mistaminers, it's another story, there's a different level of, of evidence that we have to, to come up with. But we will do our best, we can't issue a violation to a license plate, that's not how it works. We're not in Ohio, they do that in Ohio. So we'll continue, we have the officers out there, we're still responding to calls for service, which takes up a considerable amount of time, but we're doing what we can on these major streets, hoping to get to these side streets. But as a community, we've got to move forward, and we've got to get through this issue and get this traffic slowed down, so we don't have those accidents.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm all done.
I'm gonna open it to public announcements for the community. Please raise your hand on the Zoom if you have a public announcement. Otherwise, I'll go on to public comment now. Raise your hand on Zoom if you have a public comment, and you have a three-minute limit. We have a two-four-eight number, I'm gonna ask you to unmute yourself and identify yourself, your street, and your city.
My name is Shane Cisco. I reside in Detroit, Wayne County, my number's two-four-eight eight-two-zero-one-three-three-three.
You don't have to say your name, sorry, and your number, sorry.
Oh, okay. Did you need any other ID?
No, go ahead, please, you do have three minutes.
I live in the Far West Detroit, and our neighbors in Military Park are also involved in the situation. I am here to speak on behalf of both Military Park and Far West Detroit regarding an officer, one of your officers, shooting and killing a very docile dog. I would like that investigated, we would like that investigated by City Council, the Honorable Mayor, and our Police Chief Myers. We felt it was unnecessary, and we, we really want it investigated. We do have an eyewitness, possible video footage. We, we would just like to be able to understand why an untrained officer for a rescue would come in for animal rescue without equipment, nothing. That shouldn't happen again, and we...
Would it be okay if I shared your number with the chief directly and have him call you tomorrow to discuss this further?
We would like to meet with, it's not just me. We, we would all like to hear an investigation and have it done by the three of you, City Council Chief and Mayor. That's what we're asking, if that could be put on the agenda after your investigation and discuss it in the public. We don't want this to happen again, and we're, we're all very upset about it. We, we had all fed and cared for this dog, and even DACC was coming in, Animal Control for Detroit, which would have been reciprocal with a fenced-in dog, he was fenced in. There was no need to shoot and kill him, or even bother, when we could have called them in, in the morning on Sunday to pick him up with the, you know, right equipment. There, there was no need for this baby to die.
Thank you, ma'am, I will pass your information off to the chief, and then he will organize everything necessary to take care of this.
And we would like to continue to come to the meetings until that's brought up on the agenda and discussed what your, what your feelings are there.
Oh, Madam Chair. Very much.
Council Chair, I think our, our corporation councils should address that, because I don't think that's in our realm of...
I know, ma'am, I'm sorry, Mr. Muscat, let's let the chief start with it, and then we'll decide from there where we need to go.
Two, two things, I completely understand her passion over this incident. I want her to know two things, one is, we already initiated an investigation, we do anytime we discharge a firearm, and anytime...
Thank you, sir.
And then anytime we have to take any type of action on a dog, so that's already started. I would encourage you, if you want to make a complaint over it, I can get you the complaint form. We'll already do that without it, but if you want to file the formal complaint, we'll take that, put it through. Our goal is to assure the public safety, it's to assure the public safety of you, for the people in the community and for our officers. We understand, when it comes to pets, people are very passionate, and we want to make sure that if we've done everything right, we continue to do it, if there's things that we can do better, we fix those processes and make sure we follow our policies and procedures and move forward, and we'll do that. By doing complaint, we'll let you know the results of that complaint and what we found, and we can move forward from there. But if we've done things right, we'll acknowledge it, if we've, things that we can do better, we'll fix it. But I appreciate you coming to the meeting, but we've already initiated both those investigations, and we'll continue. And if there's anybody that does have video, please provide it. Captain Erickson at the police department will be conducting the overall review at the end. But if you give me a call at two-seven-seven-seven-four-zero-eight...
Just a second, sir, let me grab a pen to record that number.
No problem, I want to make sure you get what you need.
Yes, sir, two-seven-seven...
Seven-four-zero-eight, that's the office of the chief, and we'll get you who you need to, to get you the paperwork to file the complaint, and we'll make sure we'll follow up with you with the result.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Have iPad, please identify yourself with your name, your street, and your city.
Yes, my name is Teresa Klonika, I also live in the city of Detroit, I border with Dearborn Heights. I have been speaking with the homeowner regarding this incident. I understand the chief is going to investigate all this, so I would like to also get the same information, or if somebody will be contacting me also regarding this.
Teresa, we don't have contact information, I'm gonna ask you to call the chief's office number at two-seven-seven-seven-four-zero-eight tomorrow, and then give them your information.
Okay, and the chief officer, as I mentioned, Captain someone was handling this? What was his name?
I think, I do believe it was Erickson, right? Yeah, Erickson.
Okay, thank you so much, I will follow up with this, and I believe you have many other residents that are also. So thank you very much for the investigation and your time, and everybody have a wonderful night, stay happy, healthy, and safe.
Thank you, you too. Okay, next we have a three-one-three-five-nine-one, go ahead, please, you have three minutes. Go ahead, please, you have three minutes.
Hello, this is Joanne Osmond, I am also in the Far West area. And like everyone's telling you, we worked hard on this dog, he was not a vicious dog, he was just hungry and scared. And I want you guys to know, you need to really take this seriously, because we've gone to Channel Seven with this, and we're not gonna let it, no, let it go. We want the public to know what was done to this dog unnecessarily.
You also may want to call the chief of police's office tomorrow, give them your contact number, so you can stay in tune to where they're at in the investigation.
Yep, I have the number.
Thank you very much. Okay, next we have Latonya Gator.
Hello again, everyone, and I'll be brief as well. Just wanted to make another announcement, and sorry, Council Chair Maxwell Melonowski, I missed that part of the section, but just wanted to give a thank you to everyone who's donated to the Autism Acceptance Month baskets that the commission was able to put together. We were able to create a total of five baskets, and we were able to award two families because we had an overwhelming amount of items and monetary donations and gift cards, you name it. So shout out to everyone in the Dearborn Heights community who supported that event, and I'll be sure to give an update of when the families are awarded that gift, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, I'm gonna call on YT, and if you are calling on the same issue regarding the dog, we do not repeat the same issue for several people, that's already been addressed. If you do, I will ask you to just call the actual chief of police tomorrow. Okay, I got Jaclyn D., the same thing with you. I'm gonna ask you, if you're calling about the dog, if you're commenting about the dog, please contact the chief's office tomorrow. We don't have several comments on the same item because of time.
No, I know nothing about that dog.
Okay, good, all right, you have three minutes, I need your name, three and city.
Okay, my name is Jaclyn Dewali, I live on McKinley here in Dearborn Heights. Mayor Bozzi, I have reached out to you previously about my neighbor's garage that has been falling for the last two years now, and about just the general blight of her house. I know we have been in contact with the ordinance officer, who says that they're, you know, they've been trying to get bids for the demolition of the structure. However, I've been dealing with this for five years. I, you know, it's eighty degrees today, and I want to have my windows open, because I'm now working at home. And my office smells like a combination of dog shit and stagnant water, sorry if I'm not allowed to cuss, I'm just kind of upset about this. It's just, you know, when I'm trying to have a nice home in this city, it's kind of ridiculous that I have an unvaccinated, possibly unlicensed dog living next door that is constantly barking, sometimes in the house for weeks at a time, which means that he is also shitting and pissing inside of her house. And I have to deal with the ramifications of, I guess, her hoard or negligence. And I just would like something done about this.
Thanks, could you give me a call tomorrow morning at seven-nine-one-thirty-four-ninety?
Okay, and that's three-one-three or seven-three-four?
Yes, I'm sorry, three-one-three, seven, seven-nine-one, three-four-nine-zero.
Four-ninety, okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have Vince Tripkowski, go ahead, please, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I want to make a comment regarding a meeting recently held where I was making some suggestions, and I do not appreciate being downplayed by the member that I was discussing with. I've been in this city and worked for this city for several years, and the basic fundamental operations of that department have not changed. I don't appreciate it, and I don't think any citizen should be downplayed when they're trying to make suggestions to improve our city. And one more thing. I think Mr. Badu should listen to the recreation director, based on her experience with all the vandalism and stuff that has come to our picnic tables and our parks. And if anybody can do something or say something that Chris would about having their students be more respectful without throwing their trash everywhere, it costs the city a lot of money to go picking up after those students, and that goes for any high school that's throwing trash on our parks. Thank you very much for allowing me to say my piece, and I wish I could play good night, thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the audience? Okay, before we end this, I'd like to wish everyone a good night and happy Ramadan. Do I hear a motion to end our meeting?
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat?
I move that City Council ended right in our meeting.
Support.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Good night, everyone.
Good night, have a good Ramadan, folks.
Good night.
Good night.